And you are ready anytime.
Thank you very much. It looks like we are just waiting for member Cole Heinek. And I'll just give it another couple moments.
I'm here. I don't know why my camera's not on.
That's all right. Done. Welcome. All right. It is 6:30. So we will go ahead and get started. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Charter Township of Meridian. This is the zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Today is Wednesday, October 14th. It is 6:30 PM. Our first item tonight will be to approve our agenda. Do I have a motion? Anyone?
I moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Member Hendrickson and support from Member Wazinski. And let's see, I've got, sorry, I'd like to make a little note who I have so I can just go through for all of our. Oh, and Member Shortkey is with us today, too. Hi, Member Shortkey.
Hi, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and vote on our approval to, or rather, motion to approve our agenda. Uh, let's see. Member Hendrickson.
Yes.
Member Wazinski.
Yes.
Member Cole Heinek. Member Shortkey.
Yes.
And Member Cole Heinek, is your microphone working? The Chair votes yes, and since we, I can't quite get through or hear Member Cole Heinek, the motion passes. You can pass that without, without all members, correct, Mark? Okay. All right, moving on. We will move on to the, um, our minutes, corrections, anything that we need to address with the minutes. Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from September 23rd, 2020.
I'll approve the minutes, September 23rd, 2020.
Okay, motion to approve. I'll support. So we have a motion to approve, uh, minutes from September 23rd, 2020. Uh, Trustee Wazinski.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Member Hendrickson.
Yes.
Member Cole Heinek, are you back? Still not. Okay. Member Shortkey.
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved. Next on our agenda would be communications, and we do have quite a few communications to, um, address this evening. Um, or rather, acknowledge, but we are going to go ahead and, um, we've decided with staff that we're going to address those when we get to the individual cases. So they can be properly addressed regarding the case that they, um, they are in reference to. And that, um, with that being said, we will move on to, oh, unfinished business. We have no unfinished business to address today at today's meeting. So we will move on to new business, which would be ZBA case number 20-10-14-1. And that is, uh, Fink, 206239 West Reynolds Road, Hazlet, Michigan, 48840. And at that, I will turn it over to Mr. Chapman for his presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to share my screen with you here. Okay, everybody see that?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the applicant has requested a variance to construct a parking lot located at 5965 Marsh Road, along with two currently vacant lots. So the property is currently zoned C1 commercial, and it's approximately 0.94 acres in size. The site plan shows an existing 2,827 square foot restaurant, commonly known as the watershed. And the applicant is intending to add, um, 19 parking spaces to the existing parking lot. To the north of the existing parking lot, to increase, uh, the existing 43 spaces to 62. Whoops. Uh, so they're seeking a variance from Section 86403B3, uh, which states site and rear setback adjacent to a residential district, no building, parking, access drives or other structures shall be less than 50 feet from a residential district, except a 35-foot setback shall be required. Uh, if a screen is comprised of a double row of interlocking trees or the equivalent is provided in addition to the normal landscape requirements. Uh, so here's a site plan that shows the proposed, um, parking lot to the north. Um, so in 2009, there was a variance granted that allowed the, uh, currently existing 43 parking spaces. And at the time, there was 75 required for the restaurant. In Section 86755 of the zoning ordinance, states that restaurants must provide one parking space for each 75 square feet of usable, uh, floor area, plus one for every four seats, or one for 37 and a half square feet of usable floor area, whichever is greater. Um, so the addition of the 19 new parking spaces, uh, the site is still 13 spaces short of that required 75. Um, so variance is not required for the number of parking spaces. And the new parking lot is proposed to be 15 feet from the property line to the north. Those parcels are currently zoned RB, single-family high density. And, um, like I said before, they're required to be setback 50 feet, uh, for parking lots, uh, from any residential property unless it's screened. Then it gets 35 feet. Um, so a little history, in 2019, uh, the Township Board initiated a rezoning of those parcels to the north, which I'll show you in a second. Um, those were originally zoned C1 commercial, along with, uh, the properties that we're going over today. And this would have allowed, of allowed a 15-foot setback for the parking lot. So, um, the applicant is proposing the parking lot to be 15 feet from the residentially zoned parcels to the north, which requires a variance of 35 feet. Um, so this was the previous zoning, uh, prior to that rezoning in 2019. Uh, staff recommendation, if the Zoning Board of Appeals decides to approve their request, staff recommends the following condition, that the applicant combine the three parcels, uh, into one. And here are some photos of the site. That's it. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chapman. Is there a representative for the applicant that would like to speak on this case tonight? And if so, um, you can, um, let yourselves be known, and I will need your name and address for the official record, please, before you start, um, talking with us. Thank you.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Russell?
Yeah.
Okay, you would just give your name and your address for the official record. That would be great.
It's my first Zoom, so forgive me here. Uh, my name is Alan Russell. I reside at 1690 Mac Avenue in Hazlet. Um, I am a retired builder and developer in the area, and I'm assisting the Fink family in this, uh, case, as I've helped them in the past, uh, once when we did the deck on the back of the building after a number of years with prior owners and prior applications not passing, and we got it through. And more recently, uh, putting the new roof on the building, uh, required a variance, uh, because the setback was not appropriate. And i-if you'll indulge me, patting my own back, uh, in that hearing, uh, someone asked, why is the building too close, uh, not meeting the setback? And my answer was, I believe, over the years, the roads moved closer to the building rather than the building closer to the road. They got a couple of laughs and a couple of votes, and we got it done. So I don't know if I can provide any laughs tonight, but, uh, I'll, I'll try to represent the, uh, interest of my clients and, uh, and, and answer your, uh, questions and maybe, uh, provide a little insight of my own. Thank you for your listening, my introduction.
Is there anything you'd like to add to the, to the case, or would you like to just wait and let the Board come to you with their questions?
Well, I, I can kind of go both ways, but I want to address something I heard, and trust me, hearing is not my long suit. But I thought I heard that we were looking, just in the last dialogue, at a 35-foot differential, it's 25 feet, uh, differential that we're looking for, from the 15 to the 40. So if I heard it wrong, um, so be it. Um, or otherwise, I think that we should correct it. Um, I think, was it Mr. Chapman making the, the presentation? He can correct me. But, um, if anyone else heard it otherwise, I just wanted to reiterate that we're looking at a 25-foot. And, uh, if you want me to go on with this, the, uh, what we're really looking forward, looking towards here is to reestablish the setback that was there before the rezoning was put in place. And at the time of the rezoning, um, it's my understanding that, uh, Mr. Mensor, uh, from the township approached, uh, Mr. Fink. I'm not sure if it was in person or over the phone or whatever, and informed him that, uh, they were pursuing, uh, rezoning the properties next door. Uh, and essentially said that there would be no effect on the property at the watershed. Well, uh, that was true until down the road, uh, when the idea came up of doing a parking lot, and then it was discovered that the change in the zoning had changed the setback. And it's what I call unintended consequences. Uh, I don't think that, uh, that anyone over there overtly tried to, uh, cloud the issue with, with Mr. Fink. Uh, I just think that no one thought down the road, what if, and when if, and what difference would it make? Uh, well, it makes a difference if you're trying to lay out a parking lot. Uh, you only got 19 spaces. If we, uh, if we go to the other setback, then it's, uh, it's like, uh, five. And, you know, not worth the time or effort. And, you know, in a market where restaurants, taverns, lounges, uh, are closing and dying of, of lack of patronage. Uh, we've got a situation here where we've got a strong operator, been in business a long time, no history of problems. Trying to accommodate parking on their own ground. We've already covered in the initial presentation that the parking has always been a little short. This will tighten that up. Um, and at one time, uh, to help the parking situation, the, uh, the watershed had an agreement to use some parking on, when the, uh, former and now reestablished ice cream place was closed. They used that for some expansion and overflow parking, with permission. But now, um, thank goodness, we've got a strong operator over there, and that's a viable business once again. And we all want to see that. Nobody wants to see Oakham, it's in Hamilton Road over here. Uh, you know, that's an awful mess. And here, we've got the park on the one side. We've got Quality Dairy, which is a, an established quality business. The ice cream is strong, uh, and the watershed, uh, would like to, again, reestablish the setback that existed before, um, and clean up the traffic pattern a little bit. I, I believe we're closing the driveway coming off of, I never can get the name right. Is it Manosa Road, whatever it is on the side there, which is going to keep traffic from going that way at all. They'll come in through the main existing parking lot and drive through, um, kind of next to where the trash container and so forth is now. There's, if you've been over to see the site, you can see there's a pathway there. And that'll keep the traffic contained, um, keep traffic off of that small, uh, side road. And with the new plan, and we're not asking for any variance whatsoever in lighting, in, uh, road surface, in size of parking spaces. Want to do it right and, and, and screen it properly. Uh, no variance is at all there asked for. And this will be a plus in the end for the neighbors. And, and I would point out also that there are only really two directly adjacent neighbors. One of those has submitted a letter. I assume it's in your packet. If not, I've got a copy and I can read it to you. It's about three sentences long. But he says that, uh, uh, he does not object to, uh, to the expansion of the parking next door. And, uh, we did attempt a number of times to contact the owner of the other residence that's directly on the lot line. Um, to no avail, and I did some checking around and, and my understanding, I, somebody correct me if they know otherwise, but my understanding is that, uh, the person that owns that residence is gone. Most of the time, Mark Fink has tried to contact him several times. He knows him because the person that lives in that home actually worked in the watershed as an entertainer a couple of times. And it's our supposition that as a traveling troubadour, he's traveling, and, uh, we haven't, uh, had anything, uh, you know, feedback from him. But, uh, he's the one that's furthest away anyway to the, uh, west, I guess that is. And, uh, would at least be affected, especially with traffic not coming down on that side road any longer. I, I would tell you, I'm not going to go through all the points. Uh, Mr. Petru from Kev's Engineering on the response to the questions from staff, I thought did an outstanding job. Um, I want to go back to my catchphrase for this evening, unintended consequences. I don't think anyone meant to mislead Mr. Fink. I don't think anyone intended, uh, for this action to impede his, uh, already planned use for that property in the future. And frankly, I don't think Mark had reason to suspect that there was issue, uh, there that would impact him. And, uh, what we're asking for is close the loop on the unintended consequence. Uh, you know, allow the prior approved setback, uh, the prior setback before the zoning was changed, and, and put that 25 feet back into play. And, you know, uh, review and hopefully approve the plans and specifications to be submitted by Mr. Petru and Kev's. And with that, I'll stop rambling on and answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Russell. Um, we appreciate you being here, and we will certainly, um, ask questions and we'll let you know when we, when we get into our board, board, board time, we'll, um, be able to address you directly, uh, directly. Is there anybody else, um, that would like to address this case, uh, for the applicant or any public comments on this case? Mr. Chapman, did you want to go through those communications? I know Mr. Russell hinted on the one. If we don't have any other, uh, anybody else that would like to speak on this?
Yeah.
You have someone raising their hand.
I do see that, but I, I'm guessing that that is actually somebody with the second case. Is that, um, Mannyachi is somebody from the second case? I believe. Okay, if we don't have anybody that would like to speak more on this case, on, on Fink, then, um, I will turn it back over to Mr. Chapman. If you want to address the communication before we get into board time.
Yeah, so there is one, uh, letter in support, um, from the neighbor to the north, uh, Ryan Fry, so.
Okay, thank you. And all of, uh, all of us have that in our packet, all of the board members. Um, I do want to say before we get into, um, to board time, just to remind everyone, um, I believe we have Mr. Russell, but also, is there another representative? Mr. Petru, are you from the, the, um, are you also within this case that we can ask questions of, or? If necessary? You can unmute if you, um, would like.
Yeah, I am, uh, I'm, work for Kev's. I am civil engineer and I, I work on the site plan. So yeah, I, I can help answer any questions as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, in that, in that case, since we are all done, um, with any, anyone who would like to speak on it from the applicant's point of view, we will go ahead and, uh, go to, um, board time to begin our, our own discussion on that. Um, do any of the members, and just go ahead and show your hand if you'd like to ask a question or have any comments. I know I have a couple of questions, so, um, Trustee Wazinski, go ahead.
Um, I'd just like to ask, uh, Mr. Chapman or Director Kiesewetter, can you confirm the, uh, the number of feet setback? Is it 50 or 40 feet from the existing property?
Uh, it is 50 feet. The, um, there was a mistake in, in the agenda as it was listed originally. Uh, for C1 zone property adjacent to residential, uh, the setback is 50 feet. The ordinance does allow for, uh, reduction if they're to 35 feet, if there's a double role of interlocking and landscaping in that, uh, request. We haven't seen a landscape plan. This project hasn't went through, uh, site plan approval yet. So I know the applicant thought this was the largest request they needed, and if they didn't receive it, then they probably wouldn't move forward with, without, uh, this variant. So, uh, it is a request from, instead of 40 feet, the request is 15, uh, 15 feet with a 50-foot requirement, so 35 feet.
Thank you.
Uh, Director Kiesewetter, just to expand on that a little bit, um, because that was actually one of my questions, and, um, well, first I'll ask Director Kiesewetter, um, if they do submit a site plan with that screening in place, the variance would only be for, for 20 feet. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, right.
Okay. Um, now, Mr. Russell, I will ask you then, I'll go back and flip it back over to the applicant side of things. Um, it's, is that something that you all are willing to commit to, and we would, you know, can you elaborate more on what the plan is there for that screening? Or is it that you are hoping to get the variance for that entire 35 feet versus the 20 feet?
Well, I, I confess that I'm confused on the, uh, on the numbers. Um,
They, they, Mr. Russell, there was a, a miscommunication in the actual text of the code. Um, we were alerted to that, and, uh, Mr. Chapman did, did give a, um, an update that was, that was just a typo. Unfortunately, it's not 40 feet. That's the setback requirement. It is actually 50 feet. That's just, uh, that's what the code, the code itself is 50 feet, not 40.
All right, well, um, Mr. Petru is, uh, on the line with us. Um, and hopefully he's running numbers in his head, and, uh, if I kick it over to him, he won't, uh, won't kick it back. Um, it, it's always been our intent to do an A-plus job on the lot line for all the reasons. Uh, want to be friendly neighbors, want separation there. Uh, and I said earlier in my, in my discussion, I believe that it was our intent to not ask for any variance in terms of surface, lighting, screening, landscaping. We're not asking for any variance there. The plans that we submit will, uh, under Mr. Petru's, uh, design team and so forth, will, we're, we're not asking them to do anything other than what is required. Um, I'm confused on the, on the difference in the footage, and hopefully Greg can tell us if this is going to change his plan, his proposed plan, uh, which he's got done, and I think some details in hand. If we get, uh, the go-ahead from you folks tonight, I'm going to guess, I'm putting a few words in his mouth, that he can probably have it submitted in, uh, a week and a half, two weeks, and, and move forward. Um, the only, the only holdup is the approval of the variance, um, back to what it was. Greg, am I close there?
Yeah, for sure. Um,
Mr. Petru, before you start talking, can you just give your name and your address for the record, because we even had you introduced before?
Sure. Greg Petru, uh, 202116 Hazlet Road, Hazlet, Michigan.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I think when we submitted this, um, we thought the, the setback, the original setback, or the new setback was 40 feet instead of 50 feet. Um, ultimately, we want to get down to the, the 15-foot variance that we, you know, from the original setback from the, from the residential to the commercial. So, so whether it's, so whether we're asking for 35 or 25, I guess we're still trying to get to the 15-foot. Um, as far as the screening goes, within that 15-foot, um, you know, it would be up to Mark whether he wants to provide what, what you're looking for, but I, I would think we're, we're going to try to provide the screening and landscaping that would be required to put the park in.
Member Shortkey, go ahead.
Quick question for staff. What's the difference in landscaping requirements between what is required and what is required for the reduced variance request? Or reduced variance requirement? You see what I mean? Like, what are they actually required, put in without?
The, uh, the requirement in the C1 district is a double role of interlocking trees. Typically, they're going to use maybe a spruce, something that, uh, is green year-round and provides a solid screening. In the, and that's under the C1 zoning. And then in the parking standards, they provide, um, a requirement for a minimum of planting, uh, no less than three feet high, and it could be a shrub, a bush, anything that grows to a height of three feet to buffer that, um, parking area. So the standard in C1 is a little bit more, um, intense than the standard parking.
So they have to do the double row of interlocking trees anyway? Did I, or did I?
No, that's a, uh, to, the minimum, well, the standard setback is 50 feet.
Right.
They can reduce that down to 35 feet by providing that double role of landscaping. If they don't do that double role of landscaping, then the setback is 50 feet, so the variance would be from that 50.
Right, but what is, what is the minimum landscape requirement anyway?
Well, that's, that's what I, the, and, uh, that is the minimum for the C1.
So the minimum is the double, I'm sorry.
Unless the, I, sorry, let me start over. If, if the setback is 50 feet, and they meet that 50 feet, then the minimum amount of landscaping requirement is bushes, shrubs, some type of plant material that will grow to a minimum of three feet in height along that parking lot to block it. Now, that may be intermixing with some spruce or some other stuff, but typically what we see is some type of shrub or brush that, um, is along that. If they want to go to the 35-foot setback, then the requirement is this, um, double role of interlocking landscape.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'm good.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. It's okay.
We got there. That's all that matters.
Yeah.
Member Hendrickson, go ahead.
Okay, um, I do see that, that we have, uh, Mr. Fink on the call as well. Um, so I guess, uh, Mr. Russell, are you planning on answering all the questions for the applicants, or can I address some directly to Mr. Fink as well?
Well, um, Mr. Fink asked me to represent their interest, as I have in the past.
Okay.
But I, uh, that's really why I did the introduction and have kind of been involved in the give and take. Um, he, and, you know, the three of us, Greg Petru, Mark Fink, and, and myself are the ones trying to move this forward. Um, and I would interject if I might, just as long as I have the microphone, that I was trying to make plain that, uh, I was trying to make plain earlier, our intent to exceed, uh, the screening al- along the side there. We've talked about, um, various fencing types. Um, we don't want light to shine through shrubs or bushes or trees. We're all for shrubs and bushes and trees, but I want, I want on the record that we're going to propose something, uh, that's more of a light stopper, if you will, than that, whether it's an interlocking fence of the new styles or an old style, uh, tall, you know, six foot picket fence or whatever it might be. But the idea is to have a light stopper there and our own lighting to be on that property line shining back to our side with light shrouds, which I don't think are required. But, uh, it keeps ambient light from spilling out on the sides going back. We want to have good proper light separation. We want to, whether it's headlights or the streetlights, uh, parking light lights that we put in. Um, we're going to, not asking for a variance, they're not asking for a variance again on the surface. Uh, we hope that, uh, we can come to a number tonight and I'm gonna leave that in Greg's lap. Um, on what we need to make parking and drive work together. So the whole point of being here is to end up with viable parking.
Yep.
Uh, which, when they got the property to begin with, that's, that's, that was where it was headed. And, and as I say, uh, and I'm gonna use the phrase over cause I like it's got a good catchphrase. Unintended circumstances have come up, unanticipated circumstances in some of the secondary and tertiary issues like fencing and screening and shrubs and bushes fall under the head, you know, once more unintended and unforeseen circumstances.
Mr. Russell, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you there just for a moment because we're, we as a board are gonna need to have a little bit more discussion time. So if we could limit answers just to what the board members are asking, therefore we can get to, because I think what we're, what we're getting to, and I hope that, um, you all can bear with our process is that we look to find the minimum action. That's one of our requirements as far as our variance application, um, goes in our, our review criteria. So we are looking for minimum action here. So for all of us, I, I think what, what I hear from member Shorkey, a member Hendrickson, we're trying to get towards what is, what is the minimum that is necessary here, correct? I think that's what, where everybody's trying to get.
Yeah.
So if we can, um, try to get and, and keep on scope there, um, for our, for our board time, that would be helpful. Member Hendrickson, go ahead.
Thank you. So, uh, my questions are these. First off, um, how long has Mr. Fink owned this property?
Hmm. I can't tell you. I, I'm not sure. Uh, John's mic holding on. Um,
Mr. Fink, how long have you owned this property?
Well,
Let me, let me pause you there. I'm sorry, Mr. Fink, cause we haven't heard you before and we need that for the official record. Can you state your name and your address? Sorry to be a stickler, but that's important. Go ahead, Mr. Fink.
Hi, hello. Um, 6150 Columbia Street, Haslett, Michigan. I've, uh, owned the property now, uh, this November 15th will be my 15th year.
Okay. Um, and do you own just this property or do you own any of the surrounding properties as well?
Just the 5965, the 5969, the 5971, 5973 of Marsh Road.
Okay. So the parcels in question sounds like plus one perhaps. I, I, cause there, there were three parcels that the staff had recommended combining into one. You own all three of those parcels.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, and
You repeat the que- can you repeat the question? I didn't, it blanked out.
Sorry, uh, I, I was asking how long he had owned the property and if he owned any of the surrounding properties as well.
Right.
Because the staff
He went quiet on my end. I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, thank you.
Um, so next question, um, in the 15 plus years that you've owned this property, Mr. Fink, I presume that you've sort of walked around it. You've explored the surrounding area and you're familiar with the fact that there were a number of residential homes on the surrounding properties, um, in the area directly to the north of your, of your property.
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay. So, yeah, and you were noticed when the rezoning went into effect back in 2019? You received notice of that?
I did, yes.
Okay. Um, so I guess what I'm getting at in, in mentioning this is that it doesn't seem to me as though, uh, I mean, I understand Mr. Russell's talked a couple of times about unintended consequences and that very may, very well may have happened about that. It so happens that I was on the planning commission when the rezoning came before us last year. Um, and so I did see this, this rezoning when it was initiated by the board. Um, and, and we had a public hearing and there was one at the board as well. Um, and I just mentioned that because I don't recall, um, you having been a part of those proceedings, at least not at the planning commission level to my knowledge. Um, do you recall if you were there for that public hearing?
I was not there for that public hearing, no.
Okay. Um, so here's my, here's a, a couple of my, my issues related to this particular case. Um, and I'm gonna circle around some of our criteria, even though I know we're gonna come back to it in a few minutes.
You know what, Scott? If you wanna just start on it, because I, I mean, just go, just dive into it, cause we can still ask questions while we're going through them and I trust you to, to, to go through them point by point.
Thank you. Yeah. So my, my first issue here is that I do not believe that a commercial property, abutting a residential property is indeed a unique circumstance. Um, that happens all the time. We have commercial zoning districts, uh, touching residential districts in a number of places. Um, there's an argument that could be made that, um, this is unique because it happened all of a sudden. But this owner has owned this property for 15 plus years. There have been residential homes adjacent to it. And the reason why, not to put words into the township board's mouth, but the reason that was given when this, uh, township board initiated rezoning came to us was that these were residential homes that should have been residentially zoned for all this time. And what we were doing was merely a correction to address, um, a situation that had been existing for many years. Uh, you know, dozens of years. Um, and so I question whether or not, um, there are unique circumstances to this property um, that would require a variance in this area. Uh, now even setting that aside, let me ask Mr. Fink the next question, which is, can your business operate without additional parking at this time?
It's, I'm sorry you cut out there. I mean, can you repeat the question?
I'm sorry. Yeah, of course. Um, if you were not to receive this variance and therefore we're only able to add, I guess I heard five parking spaces or whatever the number is that, that Greg could squeeze in there, would you be able to operate your, your building as a restaurant?
I would be able to, sure. I, I have been for 15 years and obviously with the, the help of the prior cone zone that was out of business, um, that additional allowance of parking helped out. Over the years, it has gotten busier. Um, parking is an issue. And I, I believe this would help that issue.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. So, you know, what, what I'm seeing is this, I don't know that I would necessarily say that there are unique circumstances in this case. Um, is addressing criteria number one. For criteria number two, they're not self-created. That's true. The zoning changed and therefore, you know, he didn't have anything to do with that. This was sort of imposed upon him. So if we accept the criteria that the unique circumstances exist, I think we can safely say that they're not self-created, right? These were, these were changed outside of his control. Um, my problem, I think my main issue is that I don't know that the practical difficulties exist that would prevent, um, the owner from using the property for its purported purpose, which is as a restaurant. Um, he has operated it successfully for a number of years as we've heard. Um, and I don't know that it would be a requirement to add to the parking in this case in order to do so. Um, that said, I'm open to additional arguments and, and to be persuaded by my fellow board members. Um, if they, if they believe that I've, I've, you know, missed something. Um, and I would sort of, I would give them the opportunity to help me to, to change my mind if that's not the case.
Thank you, member Hendrickson. Any other board members have anything to add? Member Shorkey, go ahead.
This is not an attempt to change your mind. Uh, I understand what you're saying, but I, I only want to point out that even, you know, with the addition, they, they've already received a variance a while ago, allowing lesser parking. Allowing this variance while not get, while not complying with that entirely moves them closer to compliance with another section of the code. So support of a neighbor is not a reason to approve, but in this case we have stated support from a neighbor that this adjoins for the, and it's a, and it's a trade-off. And I'm not saying for or against, but it's a trade-off. You allow this variance, you move compl- closer to this regulation. They come closer to parking regulation. I'm only stating that, not trying to change your mind, but I think that needs to be pointed out.
Thank you, member Shorkey. Member Hendrickson, go ahead.
Thank you, yes. Again, I don't mind. I, I'm, I am perfectly willing to accept a good argument. Um, because you know, I, I'm relatively new to this board and so I'm, I'm more than willing to, to learn and grow here. Um, but you bring up the, the support of the neighbor. Um, and you know, I think while I appreciate the neighbor's support, and I think we'll hear more about this later on tonight, I don't know that I can take this into consideration fully when considering this, because this is a, a, a variance that will run with the land, um, and it will run no matter who is the adjacent property owner, uh, and that may change. Um, and so while, while there is, um, support from the current neighbor, uh, we have to be thinking about what is best for any neighbor that follows into the future. Um, and so I, I do, I, I appreciate that the neighbor reached out. Um, and I certainly, uh, like to see someone supporting their, their neighbors, um, especially with, with local businesses like this. Um, uh, but you know, at there, I'm sure when the variance came before this board previously to allow for less parking, um, that, you know, these things were taken into consideration. Um, and ultimately the board granted the variance for less parking. So while I think it's laudable to move toward being closer to the, like to lessen the variance that was already afforded them. Um, that variance was given with the understanding that, um, we, that this board in whatever version it was years ago was accept, was accepting of that lesser parking, uh, being available to it. Um, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you, member Hendrickson. Go ahead. Trustee Wazinski.
Um, can I just confirm with, uh, Director Kieselbach, are the dimensions for the actual parking spaces, um, per ordinance or, or? So it looks like there's 19 10 by 18 parking spaces. Is that required? 10 by 18?
Uh, 10 by 18 is an acceptable size for a parking space, or it could be, uh, nine by 20. The difference between nine and nine by 20 and, uh, the 10 by 18 is the drive aisle and they're showing 25 feet and that's required at, uh, 10 by 18.
And what's
The other one would have been 24 feet.
24 feet, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I just want to add, while I do definitely, uh, hear what member Hendrickson is saying, um, regarding just that the, the idea that is this necessary to operate the business? And I think this is something that, you know, as a board, we're, we're still, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have to have conversations about. Um, that being said, I do agree with member Shorkey that this helps get them to what that, that, um, parking ordinance should be, how many parking spaces they should have. So in that regard, I fi- I find that to be a minimum action. As far as talking about the practical difficulties, I want to ask, and we can, uh, whether it's Mr. Russell, Mr. Petru, Mr. Fink, whoever would like to discuss this, my question is, you don't have a variance. You have all of these other businesses that are in your area. Where do your patrons park when your restaurant is full? And your parking lot is full?
Well, I can answer that, um,
Thank you, Mr. Fink, go ahead.
Along the sides of the street in front of people's homes. We've had various complaints from homeowners in regards to it, it, it's, it's at some points to, to fill capacity they've reached around the building or or around the, uh, the, the adjacent with Martinez, the back road and you know, we would like to try and create the park until eliminate that complaints of people parking in front of their driveway or in front of their home or coming out of the restaurant late at night and you know, kind of cause, causing a ruckus or so forth. You know, we're trying to help in that aspect by keeping them more contained. If that makes any sense.
Definitely. Thank you for, for clarifying that. And just, um, for further clarification, is there parking along Lake Lansing or along Marsh Road?
And, and just the parking lot where you see in the plan, that's, that's all the parking that I have.
Okay. I'm, I'm saying there's no, there's no, and staff, if you have, if you have answers for us too, that would, that might be helpful. But there is no parking on Marsh Road or on Lake Lansing where that corner is, where the, where the restaurant is. So so for overflow parking for any patrons of the restaurant, really you would be looking to park either on the, the residential street behind. Like you said before, there was a previous, uh, kind of verbal arrangement with the people that own the property. That's now an open ice cream shop. There, the, those were kind of your, your options. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So in the, in this regard, I mean, I can get to practical difficulties. Um, and I mean, we're, we're looking at this, this restaurant should have 75 parking spaces. It does not. It, um, we're looking at a residential street behind the, you know, a, as you said, you couldn't, couldn't find unique circumstances. That's kind of my unique circumstance. I don't think any of the other adjacent commercial properties in this area, but up to, well, no, I, I take that back. I should not make that, that broad of a statement. But have, without the, the additional parking that would acquire street parking. Um, or you know, it could do, could you do, do one more favor for me, Mr. Fink? Can you clarify? Is your, um, restaurant, how late does your restaurant stay open?
We're, we're open till 2:00 AM.
Okay. So, and again, we, we can't take this, I mean, this variance stays with the building. So it, circumstances for this restaurant could change. It could become a, you know, a brunch restaurant that's only open in the afternoon. But, um, being that it could, you know, be any, any form, uh, take any form of, of business, um, staying open till 2:00 AM is also something that, you know, we can consider. So staying open till 2:00 AM, you have people parking on the street in a residential neighborhood versus in the parking lot. Um, I would, I would tend, I would tend to go with, I could, I could make a unique circumstances case for this particular restaurant. Although I do hear and very much understand what member Hendrickson is saying about having had this place that you, Mr. Fink, having owned this location for 15 years and knowing the circumstances, I don't think they're self-created circumstances, but having been there and had the time rather before now to have added those spaces as necessary. Um, but Mr. Hendrickson or member Hendrickson, go ahead.
Thank you. Question for Mark, if I could. Director Kieselbach. Um, you're familiar, you've been around this township for a very long time and you're quite familiar with the zoning districts that we have, um, in the township. Um, would you say it's a relatively common circumstance to have commercial on a busy street corner that, with residential, um, adjacent to or abutting up into it?
Well, what we have, you know, again, uh, going back before C1, uh, the actual name for that district was Neighborhood Service. And that's what the whole point of that was, is to have commercial uses adjacent to residential. Uh, and then we had, uh, Community Service was the other, that was the only two zoning district. But you can see on Community Services, which was C2 along Grand River, many of those properties, especially those that are, uh, to the west of, uh, Oakhamus Road on the south side of Grand River, all back up to residential. Uh, at the time when we had Neighborhood Services, the standards were a little bit, uh, less, um, more relaxed, I should say, as far as setbacks and that, because of the, um, the idea was that they were gonna be there in a neighborhood or adjacent to a neighborhood. Uh, over time when we adopted the C1 zoning, which was early 2000, was where that 50 foot setback come in, came in to provide that additional, uh, Buffer, so I don't think it's uncommon when we see the C one zoning that it's been directly adjacent to residential.
Is that it's not uncommon?
Not uncommon.
Yeah, and so those other properties in this not uncommon circumstance that we find ourselves in. Would you say that they generally meet the setbacks that the that the ordinance requires for that zoning when they're adjacent to residential neighborhoods?
With the the current C one zoning, I would say they probably there may be an issue with the parking at at a fifty foot setback on those. Many of the and you know, the the commercial plan unit developed, not to get off the subject, but. That was specifically written for many of these properties who are nonconforming, who have these setbacks from residential that they never could meet. And had a viable alternative to come back if they were going to redevelop it or add additions, they could go through the commercial planning units development.
Okay, thank you.
I'm muted, any other, any other, any other of our board members, have anything they'd like to add? Member Shorkey, go ahead.
I I agree, there are a lot, it's not that unique to see commercial properties in the township next to residential properties, but I'd be willing to guess that. Most of those original, most of those residential properties were not originally zoned C one. And that the uni and I agree with the chair that. That property to the north was rezoned by the township. That was not the fault of the owner. That is unique, while commercial next to residential does indeed exist sometimes more harmoniously than others. This circumstance is a unique circumstance and I accept that.
Trustee Wazinski.
Um, I can see both sides certainly, but you know, I could support the fact that it was zoned. Commercial because I was on the board when we did that in a post ownership, so you know, I I understand Mr. Fink was notified, however. You know, that's still within the original number of parking spots and it's now. If it wasn't rezoned, it would still be allowable, so I also support the fact that it's somewhat of a unique circumstance at this point for that reason.
Okay, well, I'm good, I I think I'd like to try to try to go through our criteria because I think we've we've kind of gotten enough information here at some point. We do just need to get through the criteria and see if we have. A leg to stand on here with this with this variance request, so let's go and and maybe we'll. We'll go through it. Member Cole Hanek, I haven't heard from you, but give me a waiver, shout out, yes, yes, we can hear you, okay. If anything you want to add or anything you want to to address?
Well, I probably did miss some of the discussion that I was dealing, I don't know what I was dealing with because I don't think I've ever had problems on a Zoom meeting like that, but. But you've all been asking all the all the great questions you always ask, I. I I think I want to associate myself with those of you who said that you think you can find unique circumstances here, I understand that it commonly occurs that. That that the residential zoning abuts the commercial zoning, but. And as Member Shorkey, I think, pointed out. That this seems to be a relatively unique situation with regard to the zoning change that occurred, etc. I I'm not sure if you're going through these one at a time again, because I don't, I don't want to waste anybody's time either, I recognize we're almost an hour into this, what? How do you want to go, I'm 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 perhaps a little bit more thinking that there might be some real practical. Excuse me, is that that there really might not be practical difficulties to this if if as. Member Hendrickson, I believe, believes has pointed out, but again, I don't want to repeat what's already been said, and I know you want to get through these criteria, so want me to stand out of your way so you can do that?
Oh, I appreciate you, no, I just want to, I I I just want to make sure we all have the ability to be heard, all of our our members here, so I appreciate your input there. I will just say then I will leave out on the table, our first criteria is unique circumstances exist that are peculiar. Peculiar to the land or structure that are not applicable to any other land or structures in the same zoning district. I think we have talked at length about this at this point, we could make a case for either or, I'll leave it there. Criteria two, these are, these special circumstances are not self created, I think we can all very much get there and agree that these are not self created. Criteria three, strict interpretation enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulty. And I think Member Cole Hanek just touched on it, I think that this is where. I personally can find practical difficulties. Whether we get to. And and I think I I already previously stated, I think practical difficulties have to do with the with the parking scenario and where what their options are for their patrons in order to. To park without using residential streets, without using, you know, public space. So that being said, I think. I think we we can often and do group criteria three and four together in a discussion, so why don't we open that can of worms and go to. Criteria four, that the alleged practical difficulties which result from a failure to grant the variance would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. And I think that's where all of us are going, well. Can you use the restaurant or not? So I think we we know we're Member Hendrickson's hands on this question, is there any other board member they would like to add, Trustee Wazinski?
Yeah, I I would, I would agree with Member Hendrickson that, you know, it has been functioning as a restaurant for. At least fifteen years for Mr. Fink and and as much as, you know, I understand the parking on, you know, the existing or that the residential road behind it, it. It could cause, you know, a couple of, you know, safety issues, it really can work as a restaurant and. Even if you were to add five and or if you do the math, potentially nine additional spaces within the variance that could assist in in some of the parking issues you have, so. And this is the one I'm I'm stuck stuck on.
This is, this is where I'm struggling as well, because I can make a difficulty or I can make a practical difficulties argument, I understand the need for the more parking. That I do not question whatsoever, but the problem is whether or not. That constitutes unable to use the property for the permitted purpose. And I think that, Mr. Russell, did you want to add something, did you have something to say to that?
Well, yeah, there were a couple of comments that that I wanted to make real quickly. Currently, there are forty three spots. And we're talking about adding nineteen for a total of sixty two. The property is licensed for a hundred and twenty five. That's going to be within one car of one spot for every two people licensed. And I'm not sure licensed includes this kitchen staff or not, but let's just say that those are true numbers. One for every two is not extravagant. They're trying to do it right. They didn't have a parking arrangement across the street that went away to a successful business, no downside there. A comment was made that Mr. Fink did not attend the rezoning hearing. Well, let me remind you, the township approached Mr. Fink, told him they were going to have the hearing and told him there was no impact for his property. Now, again, unintended consequences, nobody may be thought of that. But if someone came and told you that and you've got, Mr. Fink also runs a golf course, he's got pretty busy schedule. And he's probably got better things to do than go to listen to some neighbor down the street getting rezoned when he's already been told it has no impact on him.
Mr. Russell, I just wanted us to keep to the to the criteria at hand because we have eight that we need to meet, if we can't meet. Criteria is three or four, if we can't meet all eight criteria, then the variance application fails regardless, so we need to keep to the the actual statement, so. I think regardless of whether or not the zoning, what what happened with the rezoning is neither here nor there for this particular. Discussion, but we what I guess is the the real crux here is that we are struggling with. The practical difficulties granting failure to grant this variance would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property. That's that's what we're all struggling with. This is a very hard one for us in every circumstance, in in most, most of our cases, this is where we get. Into the weeds of our discussions, so if there is any way that this would that that you are addressing unreasonably preventing the use of this property. Then that's what we need to talk about, if not, then I guess we go back to. Not being able to meet the cri the criteria.
Well, if if you take into account people parking on. Not overly wide, public streets. Legal or not, and that's not theirs to enforce. Then granting this is in the public interest. And makes sense. They, as I say, in the past, they went the extra mile, they they secured parking across the road when it was an option, not an option now. Now they're trying to be the only damn restaurant around that's going to go out of their pocket to spend discretionary money in a down market. And they bump into something that nobody saw coming, including the township when they brought it to his attention that there was a zoning. They never brought it to his attention that it might impact him down the road, when they clearly knew that that's what the property was bought for.
Mr. Russell, I'm just going to interrupt you there again, the important factor here is we can't, the 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 zoning board or the. Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees, we do not have magic crystal balls or know what anybody is going to do with their property in the future. All of these decisions have to be made with best intentions and of course, the intention was not to have, but this is why we have a zoning Board of Appeals, so we can discuss these things. But what we really need to get to the heart of is whether or not that this lack of additional parking spaces would be. Would somehow hinder or prevent the usage of this property. I think I saw a hand. Okay, I got Trustee Wazinski, go ahead and then we'll go to Member Shorkey after.
Um, I was just, and maybe it's premature, I was just going to move to the number five because. Number five says granting a variances, the minimum action that will make possible use of the land structure in manner, it's not contrary to public interest. And which would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety and provide substantial justice. And again, there's still the ability to add parking spaces, just maybe not be a number that they're proposing. So I don't know if that's premature.
No, I I appreciate that because I think, again, we can, we can go down three, four and five. Member Shorkey, I don't want to, I want to let you get in there, go ahead.
Okay, I I had one more question, if I may ask Mr. Fink something still, is that okay?
Go for it, please.
Is this increase in your parking triggered by a potential change in your business? More entertainment or some some kind of change, because I've been to Watershed a few times. Like, I've never had a problem parking, honestly, is there something you're moving forward or adapting that requires additional parking?
No, we're just. Not at this moment, not at all, no, just trying to run the businesses I have been for the last fifteen years and I mean, parking is, it's always kind of been an issue and it's. On the good note, it's gained in popularity, it's gotten busier over the years. And parking problems have increased and I, you know, we're just trying to cure that problem.
Okay, thank you, I'm good.
All right, I appreciate that, thank you. Mr. Petru, did you want to add something?
I just wanted to bring up the fact that with the with the fifty foot setback, originally, we thought it was forty, but with the fifty foot setback, we wouldn't be able to add any parking in that additional lot. I know we had said maybe we could add, I think, five spots, but with that fifty foot setback, we wouldn't be able.
Okay, I think that, thank you, I appreciate that addition because I think that. That might slightly change our minimum action idea or concept. I saw Trustee Wazinski and I see Member Hendrickson's hands, who would like to go first, go ahead.
Mr. Petru, could you, could you explain a little further, so if you go ten feet back, is it because of the accessway reducing the twenty five foot?
Well, we only have, we only have like, I think, forty eight feet right now from that property line to where the parking lot is now. Oh, yeah, with the fifty foot setback, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to put any any parking there.
You would still need a variance, is that what you're saying, to put any parking? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hendrickson, Member Hendrickson?
Thank you, yeah, so I have a question about the site plan provided in regards to that statement that was just made by Mr. Petru. There's a section on it that appears to have to be just north of the main building. And the text bumper blocks or bollards is written in it and it is sort of a rectangular shape. And it appears to be about, gosh, I don't want to guess how many feet it looks across east to west, can you tell me what that is, please?
Yeah, we had just proposed bumper blocks along the.
Yeah.
South edge of that parking, kind of as heard.
I'm asking, what is the rectangular box with the diagonal hash marks in it?
It looks like it's between the actual building and where the parking begins, is that the, that's the service drive, that's the access area?
I'm just not sure what you're talking about, I guess.
Do you see where the text bumper blocks or bollards physically is on the?
Mr. Chapman, do you have that map you can pull up so we can take a look at it?
Yeah, I I see that, that's the actual building where the where the hatching is.
That's the building?
I think it's the, it's the rectangular shape just north of the building. Before the south side of the proposed parking lot.
Yes, where where the where your cursor was just a moment ago, Mr. Chapman, right in that area?
Yeah, so that's an existing house.
Oh, that's a house.
Yeah, this area right here.
That's a home?
So, okay, so, okay, now I have questions. Thank you, Member Hendrickson, because now I have even more questions, so the parking would be on the opposite side of that home, is that home owned by Mr. Fink? Or is that home the one that we had, it's owned by Mr. Fink, okay?
Yes, that is owned, that's part of the wall. Separate attachment.
Okay, now, my next question on that home would be, is that? I I have, I have so many.
What is the plan for that home, I guess, let's start with that?
That home, it's 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 office space, storage, it's it's just, it's it's always been there. But we use it for, we store, you know, excess inventory, so forth, we have desks set up there, I actually have a. Yeah, it's 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 storage and there's a garage also behind it, we. Extra freezer space.
Well, so. So I'm sorry, Member, Member Hendrickson, yeah, but to, can we, Mr. Chapman, can I, can I have some assistance? Is, so this is not where we're where we're considering the setback, the setback is for the outer line properties, is that correct?
Right.
You're muted.
Sorry, yeah, so this is all, this whole area shown on the site plan is C one, so to the north is the residential.
Okay.
And the house is nonconforming, is that right, Keith?
Yeah, well, to be used as a single family residence, yeah.
But it it can be used, since it's zoned commercial, it could have been used for commercial purposes, it just has to be meet commercial purposes, but it probably is. but it probably is non-conforming because of the setback from Marsh Road.
Okay. Okay, thank you to staff. Anyone else? Any other members have anything to add or to, uh, throw out there? I don't know that this necessarily changes my perspective as far as, um, anything goes, other than to say that, um, having that building there, you know, that, again, I mean, it's, that's, that could be, also be parking. Yeah. Okay, well, I think we go back to the criteria. Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Chapman. Um, I think we go back to the criteria and I, you know, am again struck by, let's see. It just, I'm, I'm still, I could, uh, criteria number six, granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character in the vicinity of the property. I could, I could say, uh, I could make that case for that. I could, uh, make, probably make a case for the conditions pertaining to the land or structure are not so general or recurrent in nature as to make the formulation of a general regulation for such conditions practicable. I can also reach that criteria. Uh, granting the variance will be generally consistent with public interest and the purposes and intent of this chapter. Again, this is where I'm going to struggle because if the intent in the rezoning, I mean, there was intent in the rezoning, I should say. So the intent in the rezoning is, uh, we, should be, should be respected and considering that it was not that long ago. And I do think that it was done, um, with care and with thought, that, um, I don't know that I can necessarily make criteria eight. Member Hendrickson, go ahead.
I moved to deny the variance, um, as, as requested, um, in case number, oh goodness, I'm, I've lost it. Uh, 20 dash 10 dash 14 dash one for failure to meet the eight criteria that we require in order to approve a variance.
Let's see, support?
Well, support.
Support from trustee Wazinski? Any other discussion? I would just say, I would, I would just add, um, I do, I, I, I would like to be clear. I have a difficulty meeting criteria four, criteria five and criteria eight on this, um, variance application. So I, um, understandably would agree with that motion. Anyone else want to add anything?
Hi, this is Don again.
Hi, Don, go ahead.
Just, just parachuting in. I, I, once again, I, I just, um, I want to associate myself with your comments. I think the, the problems, I think, uh, that I see are where, are with those criteria that you just listed. And I don't believe it's been demonstrated that they'll, in particular, that, um, they'll be unreasonably prevented from, uh, using the property for its permitted purpose. And, uh, for that reason, I'll be supporting the motion to deny.
Thank you, member Colheinek. Yeah, I, I just want to reiterate, I think that we all want to see business in Meridian Township succeed. Um, and, and particularly in light of what's happening in our country right now, um, and with the recession. I mean, this is, we, we really do want you to succeed, Mr. Fink. Please, please know that. Um, I think that looking at that and also with the additional information, and maybe we all didn't, you know, got a big shock when we looked at that, at the site map. But I think that going back to that site and looking, and I, I think that maybe there's other options. And that's why I would lean towards, uh, very much supporting the denial. There looks to be like there could be some other options there with parking. Um, and I, you know, I, our, our job as the ZBA is to, to create variances as minimally as possible. Because this does stay with the property and not just a particular business owner or the particular business at the time. So, um, that being said, if there's no other discussion, I'm going to go ahead and go to a roll call vote. Okay, I don't see any, any waving hands, so. All right, this is a roll call vote to deny the variance application in ZBA case number, let's go, 20 dash 10 dash 14 dash one, Fink. Uh, member Hendrickson?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Wazinski?
Yes.
Member Shorty?
Yes.
Member Colheinek?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. I'm sorry, unfortunately, Mr. Fink, your variance application has been denied. And we do, we really do appreciate you and Mr. Russell and Mr. Petru giving us your time this evening. And we, we certainly do wish you the best with your business. Thank you for, for being here tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on. Next order of business is, sorry, I'm scrolling through on my iPad here, folks. Next order of business is, ZBA case number 20 dash 10 dash 14 dash two, Maniachi. And, um, I will turn it over to Mr. Chapman.
Okay, ZBA 20 dash 10 dash 14 to Maniachi. So the applicant requesting a variance to allow accessory building to project in the front yard located, uh, in a parcel north of 3690 Hewlett Road. Uh, this parcel is currently zoned R double A, uh, single family low density. And the property is point four three acres in size. Uh, requesting a variance from section 86 5651, no accessory building shall project into the front yard. Uh, this site plan shows, uh, an existing non-conforming 900 square foot garage that is located in front of the proposed uh, 1750 square foot single family home. Uh, prior to the creation, uh, of this parcel, this non-conforming garage, uh, was on a larger parcel with this neighboring, uh, single family home, uh, along with this pole barn. Uh, in 2016, this property was rezoned from RR to R double A. And 2017, the property was split into two parcels. And also in 2017, the applicant was denied a variance to construct a house that was approximately 2,100 square feet, uh, at its closest point. Uh, with a setback of 68 feet from the center line of Hewlett Road right away where an 85 foot setback was required. Uh, project overview, uh, like I said, shows existing non-conforming 900 square foot, single family garage uh, in front of the proposed home. Uh, prior to the creation of the parcel, was on a larger one, built 1960. So with the land division, uh, that was done on the property, that's only based, um, it was approved based on meeting the minimum width of 90 feet and minimum area of 13,500 square feet. Uh, that is required for the R double A zoning district. Go back. Uh, so the land division doesn't take into consideration, uh, if an existing building will become non-conforming, uh, once the parcel is divided. Um, so once that land division was done, um, it made the existing garage and pole barn non-conforming. Uh, because in section 86 502 of the zoning ordinance, it requires, uh, accessory buildings uh, to be located on the same parcel as a principal structure or a house. Um, so once the new house or proposed house is created, is constructed, that will move, remove that non-conformity, but will create another one, um, which, uh, this variance request is for. So in summary, uh, the, uh, garage is non-conforming because it's located 47 feet from the center line of Hewlett Road where the required setback of 85 feet. And it will be located in the front yard of the proposed single family home. So yeah, 47 feet from the center line of Hewlett Road, 16 feet from, uh, in front of the proposed single family home. And 13 feet from the south property line. Uh, the garage in total will project 37 feet in front of the principal structure, which requires a 37 foot variance. Um, also in 2017, there was a wetland delineation that was conducted. Uh, this was on the eastern side of the property. Uh, the proposed, uh, single family home currently is located 43.5 feet from the edge of uh, the previously surveyed wetland boundary. And three and a half feet from that, uh, the required 40 foot well and setback. So if this variance is approved, the applicant will have to, uh, get a delineation updated to confirm the location of those wetlands. And here's a couple of pictures for you. And also there was three letters, I believe. One in opposition and I think there's two, two that were in support. So, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman, very much. Is there anybody here from the, uh, or the applicant or any representative for the applicant that is here tonight, um, that would like to speak on this case?
Yes, my name is Chuck, Chuck Maniachi. And I am the applicant.
Can you please state your, uh, address for the record, please, Mr. Maniachi?
My current address is 3957 Hellamino Drive. And that's in East Land State, Michigan.
Thank you very much. If you'd like to go ahead or is, uh, yeah, why don't you go ahead if you want to?
Okay, um, well, a couple of things, uh, just some overall comments as Mr. Chapman, as Keith, uh, provided us with the history of the parcel. And one of the things that we, we did after a request for a variance three years ago was re, um, redo the, the footprint of the house to make sure it met all the setback requirements. That was what was on the table in 2017. And in the report for the, um, for the ZBA at the time, it indicated that if it was approved, it would also essentially have a garage forward of the house. And then that would be, you know, non-conforming because the ordinance says you should not have an accessory building forward of the house. So that, that, um, that did not get approved. The thought was, the statement that the chair made at the time, Chair, um, Bouchain, Bouchain, Bouchain. He stated that there's a buildable area available on the property without the need for a variance. So we took that to heart. We put the building plan at hold and worked on a customized floor plan with a footprint that would meet the setback criteria. And that plan was submitted by Jerry Fiedewa Holmes in August as part of his request for a building permit. And that permit is pending the resolution of this variance request. And by building the house, we're able to eliminate the non-conformance issue related to two buildings being on a parcel without a primary residence. And, and from our perspective, it seems like a reasonable compromise and a benefit to the community. To have a house on the parcel, even though there's an existing building that will end up being forward of that home. And as Keith mentioned, we had two letters in support and that's on this north and south side. Uh, those are the key neighbors, um, from our perspective, because they're right there on the road with us on each side. And, uh, they were supportive of it. And on October 8th, just last week, the road commission supported the retention of the garage and allowed us to keep the driveway there and put in an additional driveway for the new home. So we've been trying to make sure we're doing everything that we need to do to, um, to be good neighbors and be good stewards of, uh, in, in the community. And, um, there was one letter that was more of a, um, uh, an angry tone that said we had a business venture and it's profit motivated. And, uh, that neighbor has some of their, their backyard, uh, adjacent to a portion of our backyard. And, uh, it certainly is not a business venture or profit motivated, uh, action that we're taking. It's much easier and less expensive to tear down a garage than it is to follow these channels to be, um, to be able to put our home there and keep that garage. Just some information, we've lived, uh, my wife and I and my children in three different houses in Meridian Township for the past 33 years. All within about one and a half square mile. We scaled up as our family grew and, and now we're scaling down. It's the last house we planned to build and live in, and we're incorporating many of these age in place amenities with the call zero clearance entries, you know, no step onto the front porch, no step up from the porch to get into the house, wider doorways into the bedroom and bathroom and stuff. And if we build the home on the parcel, the, the garage exterior will be improved upon to match the house. It won't be an eyesore to the community, you know, from our, from my perspective, it'll be more attractive and it will require significant investment. Uh, certainly a lot more than will cost to tear it down. And we have invested already in the electric. We wanted to make sure the, the building was safe after we bought it. So we brought the code up to date from the electric standpoint, so that, uh, we didn't have any concerns because we were using the, um, garage. And then I was thinking from a community standpoint, community impact, having that garage where it stands, uh, it shields the view of a pole barn that's on the back of our parcel. And then once approved upon to match the new house, um, I think it would be considered a more attractive option when driving or walking by versus seeing the metal sided pole barn with a bunch of concrete. So the question is, why do we want to keep the garage? It's easier, simpler, less expensive to, to, to get rid of it. But we've owned the property for four years and we've been enjoying and using it quite a bit. And it's what I imagine that we would do when I rode my bike by there four years ago and said, I'd really like this property. I saw it was for sale. I said, you know, I made a phone call to a real estate agent before I even got home and said, I'd like to put an offer on this property. I really like it. I like the location. Uh, I like that it has these outbuildings that we can use, um, for, I just, we, we got, you know, kids that live in the area, are two adult grown children, two of them out of three live in the area, and two of our grandchildren do as well. And my grandchildren go to Bennett Woods. So, um, it's where we meet up with our adult children, our sons-in-laws, our, our daughters, our granddaughters. We work on projects in that garage. Uh, in the pole barn, we've got weight equipment and, uh, we, we all exercise at different times. We're, we're in and out of there. I'm able to do woodworking projects in the garage. And it's where friends come by to hang out. We do simple things like watching the high school, uh, the homecoming parade. You know, that garage is right there in the, right in the middle of the action. And what we found this year with the social distancing restrictions we've had, it's been a great neutral space for friends of ours to meet us there. We sit outside on the driveway or just inside the open doors of the garage as the weather gets cooler. We've got lawn chairs in there, a small refrigerator to keep beverages cool. It's just what, we, we've really found that we've enjoyed that garage. Passersby, when I'm in there with my son-in-law, we're working on his 1971 MG that he keeps in the garage. People, they, they come in, they poke their head in the garage and start talking about their, their experience with, um, with old cars. It's just, I mean, I was in there and when some guy came in and he just said, hey, I used to have one of these and, you know, he's in there for about a half hour just talking to me. And then other people stop by to tell us how they used to bring their lawnmowers and snow blowers to the person. We used to live there with his family, Neil Patterson. He used to work on small engines and apparently they would always bring their vehicle, their, their lawnmowers and snow blowers there to be fixed. Neil would often, you know, take old ones and fix them up and have them out there for sale. So, you know, all this community interaction we have aren't things we would do with an attached garage, um, you know, on the house. And for us, it's like a little getaway on our own property. And what we've learned is just using the property in the last four years is it's our front porch to the community. You know, we've heard, we've got the, uh, Okemis Preserve. Uh, one of the things they focused on were, um, you know, front porches, garages in the back of the house. Um, short distances of the, of the driveways to foster, you know, the, the feeling of neighborhood and people walk by and they can talk to the neighbors on the front porch. The house that we are going to build there, that we want to build, has got to be 60 feet back behind that, that sidewalk, 85 feet from the center line of. The house that we are going to build there, that we want to build, has got to be sixty feet back behind that that sidewalk, eighty-five feet from the center line of Hewlett. And we did a footprint that would fit that and meet all the setback requirement. But it's much too far to allow for that impromptu friendly interaction that we have with people passing by. So that's the reason we want to keep it. You know, our request is to to keep the garage on the parcel if we build a new home. That's just a little bit of the story behind the garage and why we'd like to keep it.
Thank you, Mr. Maniachi. Appreciate your uh input there. And um we really appreciate you uh giving us all that that insight into um this case. Um if there's anybody else that would like to speak on this case, um please make yourselves known.
My wife is on Zoom as well. I don't know if she's got the ability to raise her hand.
Um that's it. Mrs. Maniachi, do you want to add anything to what your husband said or can we go ahead and get into board time? We know that you're here. We can always call on you for questions too, unless you have anything else you'd like to add that your husband didn't touch on.
Um I just had a couple of things to say.
Okay, please um state your name and your address for the public record.
That's my beginning part. I'm gonna be reading this and trying to use my former teacher voice. I have spoken out loud temporarily reside at thirty-nine fifty-seven Palomino Drive in East Lansing. We own the property at thirty-six ninety-six Hewlett Road in Okemis.
Mrs. Maniachi, Mrs. Maniachi, can you hear me? We're having a very difficult time hearing you. Um it sounds, it sounds a little garbled um and I want to make sure.
I can't hear. All right, we've got a lot of echo, right?
Yeah, I have a, I have a lot of echo here. I I can't understand what you're saying and I want to make sure that you're heard. Are you, are you in the same? Anybody go in the same room?
I can't hear. Mark, can you hear me?
He can hear you.
We can hear you, but we cannot hear your wife clearly. We heard your statement when you had your camera off. We could hear you clearly. Mrs. Maniachi, unfortunately, I can't understand you and I don't want uh your statement not to be heard. Um if you'd like, we can give you an opportunity to come back on and when we go get into our board time, if you have.
I can't hear anything.
Sometimes um you may have to.
I don't, I don't hear anything. Uh what, something happened?
We can hear you clearly.
Got it, okay.
Okay, we can, we can hear you clearly. We cannot hear your wife clearly.
All right, so let me move my line. It may be causing part of the problem.
Are you in the same location? Can you go to the same room?
You have the two devices that are connected and they're getting feedback between the two of them.
Yes, if you, if you two can go to the same location as opposed to being on two separate devices, I think that'll help clear up your connection.
We are.
Okay.
I can put on my techie hat for a minute. It may be that they're trying to stream two videos at once when we could hear, we could hear them pretty clearly when there was only the one video.
Yes, okay, there we go. Mrs. Maniachi, just go ahead and state your name and your address for the record.
Yes. Um Renee Maniachi. I temporarily reside at thirty-nine fifty-seven Palomino Drive in East Lansing. We own the property at thirty-six ninety-six Hewlett Road in Okemis. Um just very quickly, I don't want to take up a ton of time. Your time is important. Uh I really am fascinated by everything that you guys are doing and um I've been asked to be a part of the Mirdine Township uh Board at different times. This is really quite interesting to me and a nice bit of uh of interest that I may not have had in the past. Um I just want to say that I've been a resident for over thirty years. I've worked for Okemis for thirty-five years, again, as an educator. This is fascinating to me. You guys work together so well and people that know me well know that I do not um give compliments easily, but it's a, it's a nice balance. So whatever the outcome, keep doing what you're doing.
Um we appreciate that very much. We we work very hard to come to consensus.
You do.
And we really are thoughtful about our decisions, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
It's incredible. Um four years ago, when my husband came to me to discuss the parcel, um I thought, oh, boy, okay, what, where is this? You know, I worked in the high school, but I I wasn't sure exactly what he was talking about. And he was excitedly describing, talking to the owner at that time, Neil Patterson, and said the family had owned the place uh since the sixties and years before the developments had come in on all sides of them. You know, Hewlett Road was dirt road when I started at Okemis High School, right before. Um the Neil was ready to say goodbye to the home and the property at that time. Um but he took us through and you could see the pride that he had in the buildings that they had on that property. Um he, he was giving information, telling stories about experiences over the decades. He used to be a person that repaired small engines right there in that garage. And um you know, so people would regularly come by and talk to him and appreciate what he did and and you know, it became a deeper meaning to me at least about, oh, okay, it's a garage, but you know, I guess it's more than that. Um so within the next couple of years, we found the location was a very popular place to meet with and talk with neighbors. Um we would invite fellow teachers, friends and family to join us in that garage and, you know, cheer on students and such that were walking, you know, parading down south on Hewlett Road uh for homecoming. That was always a fun one. Um we've grown to embrace the sounds from on and around the football field and and, you know, track events and band practices. And that helped to secure our thought about building on the area that was vacant. We didn't necessarily at first have that thought. Um we honestly believed that we had had clearance to keep the garage or we wouldn't have proceeded to this point. We spent a few, couple of years at least trying to perfect the building that we would put on that spot. And we sincerely thought that we were, you know, had avoided some of the um some of the restrictions. Um we've come to know the neighbors on each side of us, to the north and the south. We know some in the sanctuary. You know, we share interests and a common respect for the area. My husband Chuck has regularly been part of a group to make sure that, you know, wetlands and areas uh around, you know, um incoming developments are cognizant of of their impact. And so we've tried to be that as well. Um the farm homes on either side of the slot are unique. We absolutely love them. They're historical remnants of the past. And the garage is part of that history, we believe. Um for some people, getting rid of this is a non-issue. It's like, get rid of the the building and then you can build your home. And for us, it's really been uh closer to the heart because we feel like it's an unnecessary destruction of a viable structure that we have. And and it's also removes us from the connectedness um that that bridges the few remaining older homes um to the newer subdivisions that have come in all around us. It is just a kind of a personal heartfelt thing. Um so again, I respect you and whatever decision you come up with, you know, will abide by, but by really um I really um ask for strong consideration uh for us to um be able to keep that existing accessory building uh intact and then build our modest home on the area that's available. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Maniachi. I appreciate that. Is there anything, anybody else that would like to speak on this case? Um otherwise, we're gonna get into our board time. Okay, in that case, we're gonna go ahead and go to board time. Um I um think one of the things I'm just gonna throw out that actually Mrs. Maniachi just said was the unnecessary destruction of a viable building. Um just gonna put that out there. Um we have um I believe that in and of itself is a unique circumstance. In fact, this building already exists. They're doing everything in their power just to build a home on a parcel that is buildable, the buildable lot. There, I I don't believe, I I I mean, I'll let other members chime in as well, but I think I could go through the criteria right now very easily. Anybody else want to add anything before we go through criteria? Or anybody have any questions of uh staff or the Maniachis? Member Hendrickson, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh I have a question for Keith. Um in your presentation, you mentioned that um the land division, uh I believe you said it it added a nonconformity and removed the nonconformity or building a house on this would would remove one but add another. Um in truth, two nonconformities existed um even prior to that, did they not? I mean, the structure was too close to the, to the um to the road as it was, wasn't it?
Yeah, so it didn't meet that front yard setback uh or the setback to Hewlett. So yeah, I guess it would, right? Yeah.
Right, so.
Let me get the member, then you're referring to the uh original variance request in twenty seventeen, that plan, not the plan that's before us now.
That's right, the the land division was what created it, I guess is my point. Um so my question to the Maniachis is this. Um you owned the property in twenty sixteen and the land division occurred in twenty seventeen. You were the ones that applied for the land division, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you received that um land division, uh I'm not entirely certain about the process there, but um that was, that went through at your behest.
Yes.
Okay, on the property as proposed, um on the site plan that I you've provided, and thank you for providing that, um it appears as though um what I see here is proposed house and garage um back to the, I guess that would be east side of the property, um back setback. Is your intent to have an additional garage um back um a uh that is connected to the house?
Yeah, there would be a two-car garage connected to the house for the cars to park.
Okay. Um and so.
Scott, if I may add, um what I initially wanted to do was use that garage by the road as the garage for the home. Um we wanted to be attached and we couldn't do that. The 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 um the criteria in the in the building of the ordinance would not allow me to attach to that. Otherwise, the entire structure would be noncompliant. So that's why we chose to have a a just a regular-sized two-car garage attached to the home for the cars.
Thank you very much. So um i- in in looking at the the criteria on which we we must make our decision, um I'm hung up on a couple of things. Number one, I don't see anything unique about this property um that would require a garage to be set forward from the building with the exception of the fact that it has existed for a while. And I don't think that an existing nonconformity is unique enough of a circumstance to meet the criteria um to qualify for that criteria. That's just my personal opinion. Um the cert- the special circumstances were not self-created. Yeah, the land division happened, but the reality is is that with regard to the variance request that's being put before us, no, they weren't self-created. You bought the property and it ex- if this was existing on it, so I I'm comfortable with that particular criteria. Um in terms of practical difficulties, I struggle again, as as we often do on this board, with with the practical difficulties of this, right? I mean, you're going to be, you're going to have a garage. Your property can have a garage that doesn't project forward into the front yard of this um of this property. We know that because the proposed plan has a garage on it. Um and so I struggle to meet with the practical difficulties um because you're able to find a way to have a garage on your property without violating the ordinance. Um and so I could go on with the additional criteria further down. But if I can't get past number three, I struggle to see how I could possibly support um a variance for this request, given that.
All right, well, let me give you my thoughts on that. Please, what is the intent of the ordinance? Uh first of all, I don't know if anybody even knows how long ago these eight questions had come or come up. You know, when were these eight questions developed? Um but the intent, you know, it talks about strict interpretation versus spirit of the ordinance. Um you know, the literal terms and strict interpretation. And and my thought is that, you know, I even wrote myself a few comments here, that the intent of the ordinance, this is my perspective, is to prevent somebody from erecting an accessory structure in front of a primary resident. And, you know, think about a neighborhood. People have their homes and they want to put in a a second garage or a shed. The ordinance is there to prevent that from happening because it's not a positive thing for the neighborhood. So it certainly makes sense from a structural standpoint to not be able to build a structure in front of an existing home. And I believe that's the spirit of the ordinance. So here we have a structure that's already there. Um we know it's not a public issue. Um it's not, it's not been a concern for sixty years. The road commission from a safety standpoint or the road department uh has no concern at all with that garage and even allowed us to have a second driveway, which is an exception because they feel that that garage is entitled to stay there.
Yeah. Um and and I do appreciate that, but they're not, they're, they are charged with a different mandate than this body is charged with.
Understood.
And, you know, I I I agree with your your interpretation of the spirit of the ordinance generally. And from, you know, our our list of criteria includes number five, which does refer to the spirit of or the not, yeah, the spirit of the zoning ordinance. Um but criteria number three, which is what we were talking about a moment ago, um requires a strict interpretation. I mean, th- this body is intended to more or less be the arbiter of what is existing um and whether or not, you know, strict adherence to those existing ordinances as written um is is indeed, would indeed cause practical difficulties. Now, I I I'm not here to say that you wouldn't be right in arguing for a change in terms of the intent, but that's not our mandate. Our mandate is to have a strict interpretation of the ordinance as it exists and to make our decision based on these eight criteria that are laid in front of us.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring it back to center. Thank you, Member Hendrickson and Mr. Maniachi. I want to bring it back to going through this criteria because I think that's gonna be where um where we can um focus our energies. Uh criteria number one, unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land or structure that are not applicable to other land or structures in the same zoning district. Um I did hear Member Hendrickson say he did not believe these are unique circumstances. Um because of the land division, I think it is unique because of the land division. So I think you and I are on opposite sides of the road here. Um I do think it's a unique um in that the existence of the parcel without buildings, without a house, is a unique circumstance um for that particular parcel. Um I welcome, yes, Member Hendrickson, go ahead.
So that's a fine argument to make, but if you make that argument, then you cannot tell me that these special circumstances were not self-created because they applied for and received the land division themselves.
Well, they're, they're, well, then we might.
Well, but.
Another.
The garage was there.
Mr. Maniachi, just one second. I'm sorry, big for for two reasons. One, I want to make sure the board is heard and we are able to have our discussions um so that we can come to our consensus, but also so that for um the amazing clerks that have to go through in right minutes that we know who's speaking, we can get a clear record of what's being said and what's being addressed. Um before I um let you speak, Mr. Maniachi, I just want to go back to um Member Hendrickson's point. Um I I think that's, we're gonna, we're gonna go right to one and two. Is it the chicken or the egg, right? One and two is chicken and egg. So I hear you. I do hear you. Um I might want to put a pin in those two. Um or maybe i- it's a, I'll let my other members here decide if we'd rather hear Mr. Maniachi's point to the the criteria one and two, or if we want to move on down the the um road here with the rest of the criteria. Show of hands, if you want to hear the rest of the argument for one and two and then move forward. Okay, Mr. Maniachi, please, um a- any additional information you want to give us regarding the uniqueness of this this um parcel and that why these circumstances are not self-created? the uniqueness of this parcel and why these circumstances are not self-created?
From a unique standpoint, how many RAA-zoned parcels in Meridian Township have existing structures on them without, without a primary residence? Is this a common occurrence?
I think that would be a question for staff. Director Kieselbach or Mr. Chapman, anybody have an answer to that? Or a, an idea perhaps, is this a common occurrence or is this a pretty unique circumstance?
Because the ordinance doesn't, doesn't require it, or it doesn't allow it. We probably, other than these older sites where if existing buildings, they may occur. But as the zoning board appeals over the years, we've had requests before for accessory structures in the front yard, but those were new structures that they were going to build.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I believe I've sat in a couple of those cases since coming to this board. Mr. Maniachi, if you could address then, irregardless of that, what exactly, or how we can address the self-created portion of this criteria?
Well, the way I was looking at it, the garage has been there. We created a situation where there were two parcels, two outbuildings on a parcel without a primary residence. And that was still allowed, as Keith had taken us through, when we created the split. But that garage had been there. We are looking to build a new home. The garage is already there. It's been there for 60 years. And it was built to last. You know, Renee talked about Neil Patterson and the pride that he took in talking about how his dad built that garage. His dad worked for the road commission, he told me, and it was built to last. That's where I got this 11-inch-thick concrete floor. I think he told me that's how thick that floor was in that garage. So it was there. We divided the parcel, but that garage was there whether the parcel was divided or not. One of our options was to tear down 3690, the house, and build our new home. And we chose not to do that because that would have been very wasteful. It just didn't make sense to do. So we created a parcel that had two nonconforming buildings because there's not a house on it. We would like to put a house on that, on that parcel. So the self-creation, the garage was already there, whether we split it or not. It was, the garage was in front of the home that was there. If I wanted to tear down that house, let's just say tear down the old house and that garage is there, the parcel wasn't split, we might still have the same discussion, but I can't imagine that somebody would say, you want to tear down that house and put a new one up? You gotta, you know, tear down the garage. Somebody would probably split the parcel then, and that's probably what they would do. So yeah, it just, it seemed to us to be the right thing to do. It's definitely a very unique circumstance, and it was there whether or not the parcel was split.
Thank you, Mr. Maniachi. I think trustee Wazinski had her hand raised. Go ahead.
So I just, maybe, forgive my ignorance, maybe Director Kieselbach can answer this, but I think we have to look at it as it is, not based on the decisions made before, not to say that there could be motivation, you know, to do a land division. However, I think today we need to look at as-is. And for me, I do see it as a unique circumstance that, you know, that is nonconforming and to, and it's not self-created because it was already there, it's been there 60 years. And the current plans are to propose a building at the current ordinance. So for me, I'm not stuck on one and two because it, to me, is very unique. It's, it's an old farm land in now an urban area. So that is very unique in Meridian Township. And even though there was a land division today, that, that barn or that garage was not self-created. So just my two cents on those two. I can work through the rest, but that's my thoughts on the first two.
Thank you, trustee Wazinski. I agree, I agree that these, I understand the, the, perhaps, idea that because they've owned this property, that, you know, that it seems to be, but they were granted the, they were granted the land division. This is what, this is the circumstances we have now. The circumstances we have now, this is that there is a nonconform, two nonconforming structures on a parcel that does not have a primary residence. Trying to get to that primary residence will bring those things up to meeting one part of the code.
Right.
And then the next issue being that accessory building in the front yard. So is there anybody else? Member Shorkey, member Kohanek, can we move on?
Yeah.
Okay, about, let's tackle criteria number three, strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties. Anybody want to tackle that one? Member Shorkey, go ahead.
It's a residentially zoned property. They're trying to build a residence. It's practical difficulty. They require them to tear down a structure that the township allowed. I've worked in, when they create, when they allowed the land division.
Yeah.
I've worked in places where we wouldn't have allowed that split to happen to create a nonconformity. I mean, this is kind of dry.
Yeah. Member Hendrickson, go ahead.
So when the land, this is a question for, I guess, Director Kieselbach. When the land division happened, would you have taken into account whether or not that would have created a nonconforming structure by doing it?
The land division is based on meeting the minimum lottery and minimum with their frontage on the street. It doesn't consider, so I couldn't say, hey, you created this nonconforming garage, you got to tear it down. That's not the land division. If it meets those minimums, I have to, have to approve it. If somebody does create it nonconformity, that's because of the land division. So if the building is setback too close to the line or the building, like in this case, the accessory structure, the garage is in the front yard, we certainly can advise people that they've created a nonconformity. And in the, in the approval letter, it says that because this land division was granted does not mean that any other ordinances are not applicable or that a building permit will be issued for this property as created.
So just to reiterate and restate what you just said right there, would you say it's an accurate assessment that the, they were notified that this situation that we're dealing with today may occur at some point in the future if they were to divide the land in the way that they did?
The way the, the way the ordinance, or excuse me, the letter is written doesn't waive any other requirements of the ordinance. So again, what we're talking about today, or that it's buildable. It's not, because I grant a land division doesn't mean the lot is buildable.
Right.
Excuse me, Director Kieselbach, to clarify, that that letter is issued after the land division is created?
The land division is, has to be approved by me, and it's part of the approval letter that's issued for that.
So the approval letter would come after you approved the land division?
I would, what would happen would be they would apply for the land division. I would approve it, and then they would go and record the survey or the description for the parcel.
Okay, so to, I guess, get to the point of, this would be the first time during this timeline of events when they would be confronted with the reality that their structure is nonconforming and therefore they would have to do something about it. Would you say that's an accurate statement?
It is, Scott, because we would have gone through this process many months ago before Jerry Fiedewa applied for the building permit. It caught us off guard. This, this one did. Otherwise, we would have done it well before the building permit was applied.
Sure. So I guess I struggle with the practical difficulties on this, or at least on the inability, I guess, I'll lump three and four together as we often do. I struggle with the practical difficulties because if this, if they were to address the nonconforming issue that we're discussing today, they, they would still be able to use the property for a residential purpose, right? There is a way on this property to build a house, even with a garage, that meets the strict interpretation of the statute. You could say, yes, it'll cost more money, but it is possible, right? You know, so that's where I run into issues with the practical difficulty section of the, of the, of the criteria that we must.
Understood, understood. And, you know, and I looked at that as well. And, you know, I think we all agree there's some subjectivity to this.
Yeah.
What I made my note is, it does, and to me, it seems, it talks about the alleged practical difficulties result from a failure to grant the variance would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. So that's important. I mean, we're in a township that's recycled, reused. You know, we're sending the wrong message to say, tear down a viable building. That's been there 60 years because you want to put, you know, we got to look at that, that reasonableness piece of it as well. That's, that's what I think is important, you know.
Mr. Maniachi, let me stop you there just for a moment because one of our, one of our members wants to speak and I I do appreciate your, your input there. Trustee Wazinski, go ahead.
I'm still going back to the fact that this is already created, right? So I would, I fully agree with you, like this is wasteful, but that's not part of the ordinance, right? Like, why in the world do we knock down a viable building that just doesn't seem? I agree with that, but that's not what we have to look at. What we do have to look at is it's already there. So being that it's already there and not being able to, to build a residence as a result of it already being there in a residentially zoned parcel, I do see that as a practical difficulty. It's zoned as a residential. That building is already there, so that creates a practical difficulty to, to to prevent the owner from using it as a residential property. It does seem absurd that we would ever ask anybody to just tear down a viable building. That just, that is absurd, but that's not, that's not the question here. But I can still make the case that with that building there, not allowing this residence would be a practical difficulty for a residential parcel.
Yes, I would, I would agree with that because as, as stands, as this, as this parcel stands with the buildings that are on it, in this moment, it is a practical difficulty to build a house there.
Yeah, you cannot, according to.
Cannot. So I'm sorry, I do not mean to cut you off, Mr. Maniachi. I just want to make sure that I make the point that they have gone back from being denied a variance. And we can get into criteria number five, granting the variance is the minimum action that will make possible the use of land or structure in a manner which is not contrary to the public interest and which would carry out the spirit of this zoning ordinance, secure public safety and provide substantial justice. They've gone back. We're not looking at any additional variances. We're not looking at, they, we're, now, this, this current plan for this house is within all other code, aside from the fact that this already existing building is on the parcel. So I can make case for three, I can make case for five. Four is tricky, unreasonably prevent the owner. I think that's where we're going to get into the language, and I think Mr. Maniachi already mentioned it. Unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. Again, as trustee Wazinski pointed out, this building is already serving its purpose. It's already being used, it's already in use, as they've pointed out in their opening statements. And it has a purpose. So we're looking at, will it unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property? I could start to craft an argument that would say yes, considering this is already being used as a structure without the home on it, which makes it nonconforming. This garage structure is already in use. They have used it, they are, you know, you know, using this, this for a permitted purpose. So telling them, no, you can't build a house there, but you're just gonna still hang out in the garage? I mean, that's, I think that that would unreasonably prevent. Because if you can't build a home on your parcel, you just literally have a garage and a pole barn on a parcel, that's unreasonable. Member Hendrickson.
See, I don't think it's unreasonable to say, of course you can build a home, but your property must conform with our ordinance, which we apply across the board to all properties in our township. That's where I run, that's where I run into it, that's where I run into a reasonableness, reasonableness argument.
So, but what you're saying is, it's, it's that the minimum action is to tear it on the garage, is essentially what you're saying by that.
Yes.
Okay, so you're saying that the, it's unreasonable, it's reasonable to say, just tear it on the garage?
Yeah.
That's already in use, that's already an established structure on a, on a piece of property that has no primary structure.
I guess my point is, they're welcome to continue to use it as a vacant lot with two nonconforming structures. They're looking to build something, they're looking to make a change to it. And I guess my point is, as, as our ordinance is written, they want to do that, the reasonable action that they must take is bring the rest of the property into conformance with our existing ordinance. That, that's all I was trying to say.
I, and.
Mrs. Maniachi, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've gone through this in our own heads over and over and over again. And, you know, like we said, I mean, many people would say, it's a non-issue, just tear the thing down. But, you know, it may prevent us from, from building a residence there. You're right, we can continue to use it. So it would be considered out of compliance, I guess. It wouldn't have, you know, but that's not what we're, that's not what we're looking toward. Looking toward helping the community in a way that, you know, will add another residence. I mean, as a former educator in the district, you know, for millages and everything else, I've got grandkids in the, in the schools. It's like, I feel like I might be bringing in a value to that rather than building my residence somewhere else.
Yeah, and I do think it's worth pointing out, just because I know that sometimes it comes off in a way that's unintended. You know, I take a rather strict adherence to my job on this board. And it often comes off as snide, and I'm trying to dismiss your concerns as residents and homeowners who are applying for a variance to our ordinance. And I want to assure you that I hear what you're saying. And from, from a practical standpoint, when I, when I think about, you know, hey, is it, what I love to just say, sure, like, this garage has existed for 50 years. You know, we, of course should allow it to continue. I can see where you're coming from in wanting to both have this building and also be able to build on the property in a way that, that will add value both to the property and to yourself. It's not my job to legislate whether or not this ordinance is written in such a way with enough caveats. You know, if the ordinance had been written to say, well, except for when buildings have existed for 60 years, I would, that might be a perfectly viable thing to argue in front of the township board when they're looking to make ordinance changes. But it doesn't say that, and that's where I'm hung up right now.
But I will argue with that, member Hendrickson, is what makes it unique.
And I, I will just say that I honestly really do appreciate Mr. Hendrickson, your, your point of view. And, and that is why I am, you know, loving the balance of, of this current board. And you're saying it in a respectful manner. I, I understand exactly what you're saying and can make a similar argument. I, I am hoping that the board will look at, you know, practicality of the matter that we have at hand and, you know, abide by whatever you feel is the intent and the reasonability of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mrs. Maniachi. Member Kohanek, do you want to add anything? Member Shorkey, I know we've been are gonna go back and forth here, which I, which I appreciate and enjoy as well. So if you have anything to add. I are gonna go back and forth here, which I, which I appreciate and enjoy as well. So if you have anything to add, um, I think I will hop back to the, um.
I'm sorry, hello?
Go ahead, member Cole Heineck.
Yeah, I know you're deprived because you can't, you can't see me. I can see you, but, um. So I guess this is the way this works. I just jump in periodically and, uh, I, I think, uh, with regard to criteria number four, and I apologize, I may be missing some of this along the way. But if I'm understanding correctly, the new proposed house, uh, is going to have a two-car attached garage with it. And when the construction is complete, the pole barn will remain. The purpose of a garage is to park cars and store stuff. They're going to have abundant garage, garaging and storage when this is done, if that, uh, auxiliary structure that would be in the front yard isn't there. So, um, I don't, I don't, in my estimation, see how criteria four really can be met. And, um, so I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. There's probably some other criteria that I, I might, um, debate as well. I might just debate that with myself. But with regard to criteria number four, I, um, I, I guess I'm, I'm definitely stuck on that one and, and not seeing how it can really be met with so much garage space on this property. Thank you.
Thank you, member Cole Heineck. Um, I, I, I think that we can allow Mr. or Mrs. Maniachi to address that. What is, what is, um, unique about this particular outbuilding versus the other versus those two-car attached? Which, I mean, I think you guys tou, both touched on it at the beginning in your opening kind of, um, statements, but where we talk about, and let me read you the criteria one more time, that the alleged, alleged practical difficulties will result from a failure to grant the variance would be un, would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. So that unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose is where that language is what we, I mean, you heard it in the last one as well. That is something that we really have to think about and get into. But I, I let, let me, let you think about that for one second and let me get to trustee Wazinski. Go ahead.
Um, I, I'm hearing, I'm hearing what everybody's saying, but we're still at the point that the garage is there.
Right.
So the garage as is, is a practical difficulty than building the, the, the residence. So it just seems that's the practical difficulty. If they, if they knock down the garage and then build that, that, that's a whole different story. That's not something that I don't know if we can ask people to do that, to knock down a building. They're asking for a variance.
Yes.
As is.
We're, they're, they're asking for variance with the parcel as is, with the, with the outbuildings as is.
Yes. So that to me is the practical difficulty. You cannot build the residence as the garage stands today.
Yeah.
Whether or not there's enough storage or anything like that, I mean, that's, I mean, that's, you know, a, a good, you know, suggestion or, but as is, they cannot build the residence as the garage stands today. So that to me is a practical difficulty.
It may be a practical difficulty, but I don't see where failure to grant the variance would unreasonable, unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. The house they proposed would include a two-car garage. And they would still have, correct me if I'm wrong. Go ahead.
No, no, I'm, I was, I, my, my point was to bring back to what, uh, trustee Wazinski said is that that they fail, failing to grant the variance in this case means they cannot build a house there as it's. That's, I think that that's the, that's the unreasonably prevent the owner part that, that trustee was in speed was, was speaking to.
And, and I would agree with that as well. It's.
Mr. Maniachi, go ahead.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree. It's essentially saying, you don't grant the variance, I'm not able to build the home on it. And that, that is what we're facing here right now.
Does that, does that satisfy everybody's, uh, questioning or anybody have anything else they want to add? Um, I, I mean, I'm with, I'm with trustee Wazinski on this. I think three and four, if we're looking at the parcel as is, we're not taking into any circumstance. We, we as a board cannot say, you need to just tear it out in your garage, figure it out. I think that when we talk about the minimum action, which is criteria number five, I mean, I, I'm at, I'm at a point where I can say yes to criteria two, three, or one, two, three and four. Um, criteria five, granting the variance is the minimum action that will make possible the use of land or structure in a manner which is not contrary to the public interest, which would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety and provide substantial justice. I could absolutely make that. Uh, criteria number six, granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or essential character in the vicinity of the property. I think they, they've stayed within all other code and there, I mean, it is a residential parcel. So whether or not whatever neighbors don't want a, a house there, um, it, it, I don't think would adversely affect the land. Um, the structure that we're that is in question is already existing on the land and it is already in the central character of the, of the property in the vicinity of the property. Uh, criteria number seven, the conditions pertaining to the land or structure are not so general or recurrent in nature as to make formulation of a general regulation for such conditions practicable. I don't believe that that's the case. So I could make, make that. Uh, criteria number eight, granting the variance will gener, will be generally consistent with public interest and the purpose and intent of this chapter. And I could absolutely say yes to that. So I think it sounds like from just our board time, we are still in the three, four, five range. Um, as far as, um, a consensus there. Member Hendrickson, go ahead.
So we got to number eight there at the end. Um, and I, I guess I would just ask the following. What is the intent of the ordinance that requires no buildings in the front yard of a property? Right? Because yes, it exists. But we're trying to grant a variance to say that because it exists, that it is okay that it does exist and therefore you can build on this property in a different way. And so are we, are we in fact violating the intent of this ordinance to allow something that seems pretty cut and dry to me as not allowable?
Uh, so it seems like trustee Wazinski has a answer to that.
The point, uh, member Hendrickson. I think the intent of this ordinance is not to construct buildings in the front of the property. This is already existing. So to knock down a historical building in this sense that it's already there and not being able to use this residential lot as a, as a residential property creates that practical difficulty and the intent is not to create a building in front of the property. So I think this is very different than a lot of the, this, that, you know, it's the cases that we see that want to construct, you know, uh, a pole barn for extra, you know, storage. And we've seen quite a few of these over the last year or two. Um, you know, they've already got a garage. They still want a pole barn. They want it in the front of their property. Those are the things I think the intent of this, i- in, this is my opinion, the intent of that, the ordinance is, that it's already there, I think doesn't um, impede the intent of the actual ordinance.
Member Hendrickson.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate trustee Wazinski's comments on that. And I, I, I think that generally I agree with what you're saying. The difference is that when you improve or change a property, the township does have, have requirements that you meet our code when you make those changes. Right? When we see new developments coming in on Bennett Road, let's just say, we're going to force them to build the sidewalk where one didn't exist before. Um, that's, that's, you know, on the edge of the property or, or, you know, pay for it. Um, and in that same vein, when you're looking to improve a property, you have to meet our criteria, our, we have to meet our requirements for what we expect from outbuildings, whether, when they're in the front yard. And in this case, even though it already exists, they are improving this property, right? They're putting a house where one didn't exist before. And so from my perspective, we are just forcing them to comply with the same requirements that we are requiring of everybody else um, that's looking to build on it, on a piece of property. Um, and, and so that, that's where I keep getting hung up.
And I would argue that that is the intent of our board and body is to look at the, look at the code and be able to recognize that the code cannot and will not be an overarching, all applying, all, all you conform or you don't. You know, I mean, this is, this is exactly why we have the A criteria. This is exactly why we have this board to discuss these issues is because we just say, just live with it, just conform, just, just you have to do what we say according to code is why this body exists. So that we can find these nuances where the code, where the intent of what the code is now versus something that has existed for 60 years, where we can meet in the middle there. So I think that's exactly why we exist as a body. Um, so in, in that way, I, I completely agree that the intent is to not construct new property, new buildings, new outbuildings in a front yard. And, and I understand what that, what the intended that is. This is already existing. This is here. It's an existing parcel. It's an existing building that does not have a primary residence on it. That's where I see that, you know, being, being really where the, the primary focus, um, you know, of this variance is that the, the strictly, to, to build a house that's, that's in, in ordinance that does meet all the intents of the ordinance and chapter is, that is why we have variances. So we can say, okay, in order to make this house, it's perfectly within ordinance, we will allow this structure that's already existing to continue to exist. That's, that's how I interpret that. And that's why I can make criteria number eight. Trustee Wazinski, go ahead.
I think we all have our own. I think we're ready to vote. So I'd like to move to, uh, approve, uh, ZB, excuse me, ZBA case number twenty dash ten dash fourteen dash two. Maniachi, uh, at three nine five seven Palomino Drive in East Lansing, Michigan, four eight eight two three.
And I will support.
Oh, okay. That worked.
Oh, thank you. And any further discussion, I would, I would welcome member Shorkey or member Hendrickson or member Cole Heineck. Go ahead and, um, we can discuss before we vote. That's perfectly within our, our purview here. Member Hendrickson, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I appreciate the spirited discussion that we've had on this and every topic that we come, have come before us. I, I have a bit of a philosophical disagreement, I think, on this case, um, with the other members of the board. And I think that the Maniachis are going to have a positive result, um, based on my, um, my understanding of some of the tenor of the comments that are being made. I'm not going to be supporting this variance. Um, but, uh, because I don't think it meets a couple of the criteria that I've talked about this evening. Um, that said, that's why we have five voices. Um, that's why we have a full board to debate and discuss it. Um, I do wish the Maniachi as well, and I look forward to seeing this property. And I live just down the road, um, just, uh, north of Bennett. So I may stop by and come visit you in your garage one of these days when we have the opportunity to do that.
You're welcome.
But, uh, but, uh, I, I look forward to doing so, um, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Member Hendrickson, I'm, I'm, I'm a Hewlett Road resident to the Maniachis as well. I'm way, I'm way north. I'm, I'm, I'm almost to the, to the curve. I'm past the railroad track.
Okay.
So hi neighbors. That being said, I, I do really, um, I think it is very, it's, it's important and it's vital that we look at the criteria that we go through and we and, and honestly, we do not have to come to consensus. It's nice. It's nice to come to a consensus. It's nice to have, to reach that, you know, full unanimous decision. However, that is what is, that is why we have five members, like you said, member Hendrickson. And I think that you're, you, you're, you're bringing out some points, um, particularly about the intent of the ordinance that we really do need to focus on and think about when we make these decisions. I do appreciate that. Um, if, if we have different interpretations of that, that's a whole other story. But I, I think we need to, we need to get there. We need to talk about those things. And I, I think it helps make other points finer as well. We do discuss those. So I do very much appreciate the, the conversation um, and, um, the patience as well for, um, for applicants and for staff, um, and for the, the members of the board. So thank you for that discussion. Does anybody else want to add anything? Uh, member Shorkey or member Cole Heineck?
If I could, I just, I, I did want to address the applicants, uh, very briefly. I, um, I listened, uh, to their, their stories. Uh, you know, they're longtime residents of the township. I've lived here five years. Uh, maybe almost six years now. And, uh, I do like hearing those stories and I, uh, I just, I just really appreciate, um, you know, learning more about the hi, history of the community I'm in. It's, uh, somebody driving by might just think it's, uh, it's just an old, it's just an old structure, but clearly it's, it's, um, you know, something that, that people have noted over the years and reminds people of the rural character of the community from, from long ago. Uh, however, as they say, I still can't get beyond criteria four as I see it. And, uh, so I also won't be able to vote yes on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, member Cole Heineck. I appreciate your input and, um, you know, thoughtfulness, um, regarding this, uh, this case. Um, I'm going to go to a vote because I think I, I see that everybody has kind of, um, made their case. Um, so this is a motion to approve the, uh, ZB, the variance request for ZBA case number twenty dash ten dash fourteen dash two. Maniachi, thirty nine fifty seven Palomino Drive, East Lansing, Michigan, four eight eight two three. Uh, let's see who's first on my screen here. Member Shorkey.
Yes.
Trustee Wazinski.
Yes.
Member Hendrickson.
No.
Member Cole Heineck.
Oh.
And the chair votes yes. So the vote is three yes, two no. Your variance request is granted.
Please, please, please come by. We're, we're very serious. I, I would love to meet all of you in person. I've talked to Peter. I, you know, I know Ron. I mean, it's, it's a great board. So keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you both for being here and your patience and, um, also thank you to the board members for, um, for sticking, sticking through this one and, and really getting into the weeds there. Um, definitely appreciated. Um, thank you for your time, Maniachis, and, um, good luck to you in the future. And I'll, I'll wave when I come by with my kids. We go to Hardrick Park and on our, on our bikes all the time. So a wave. All right. Um, with that is looking like we don't have any other business this evening. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Um, I can look here in participants. I don't have any hands raised. So any other public that would like to make a comment at this time?
We can of course take calls at five one seven three four nine one two three two, uh, if anyone would like to, and we can pause for about 10 or 15 seconds to allow people to call in.
Great. Thank you so much.
Can I just, one more thing, um.
Sure. Mrs. Maniachi has a comment?
I just, I was trying to make a comment on the watershed, um, discussion.
Okay.
And at one point, I know I heard, this is the next person that's up, but I still had a comment. I'm, I'm very in support. I mean, it's already passed, but extremely in support of the watershed.
Yeah.
In what they wanted. I know that it's already a done, a done deal, but, um, I was trying to make that comment and I couldn't get through.
And I apologize because that might have been my confusion. I think I, I was seeing your name and saying, uh, that seeing that you were connected to the second case, so not, um, not meaning at all to cut you off, but we were having that, those auditory issues, but, um, but so noted. And I, and I do, I do believe that we show, we did have chat. I don't, happens to that for, for home TV or for our minutes.
Right.
But your, your comments are noted here.
Okay. Thank you.
For the minute. So we appreciate that. Anybody else that would like to add anything? And I don't see anybody that's called in. If not, I'm going to close public comments and I'll go to any board member comments. Board members, any comments we have tonight? Trustee Wazinski, go ahead.
Uh, Chairman Stewart, I know I had, uh, I had emailed you and I know Director Kieselbach knows, but, um, they have passed that we will continue virtual meetings through January. So just, um, just so that we all know that, that all of these technical difficulties will continue.
Yeah, I, I did see that. I appreciate you saying that. That was on my notes. Yeah, I, I did see that. I appreciate you saying that. That was on my notes to say, so I appreciate you bringing it up. Um, we will continue Zoom. We will do our best and we will persevere. We've, we've been doing a pretty good job so far. We've had some long meetings, but we've been doing a good job. Getting through, getting through our cases and working through our technical issues. Um, so, and we got there with our applicants tonight, which was uh, huge. I, I'm glad that we solved those issues so that we could hear them and, and they, they had a proper representation, so.
It'll be nice to see member Cole Heineck's face one of these days. I still, I still have never seen.
Oh, no, no, it won't.
Yeah, yeah. One of these days, we're gonna go back, Don.
I was, I was at the training, so.
I, I met you.
Yeah, I remember a good number of you. I don't think Commissioner Hendricks was there, but.
No.
Yeah.
All right, well, you'll see in one of these days. We'll, we'll be back in person one of these days someday. We just gotta stay safe out there and keep our, keep our numbers down. Uh, that being said, any other board comments? If not, we are gonna wrap this up and I'm gonna go put my kids to bed.
I'm gonna go have dinner.
Yeah, well, me too, after I put the kids to bed, probably. All right, in that note, the meeting is hereby adjourned and I appreciate you all and uh, see you next month.
Happy evening.
All right, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Goodbye.